Of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, and City of Needles will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Here.
Mayor Jernigan?
Here.
Councilmember Poe?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
And Longbrake?
Here.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Jamie McCorkle has an excused absence. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recess to executive session. Executive sessions, do you want to read John?
Sure. The council will meet in closed session on item A, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495.7.6. The agency designated representatives are Mayor Janet Jernigan and Councilmember Tonya Belt. And this pertains to the city manager position. That is the unrepresented employee, the city manager. Item B is Public Employee Performance Evaluation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495.7. Title of the position is city manager. This is the annual evaluation. And item C is Conference with Legal Counselant, Touscript Litigation. And this is regarding potential initiation of litigation involving two potential cases.
Regular meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, and City of Needles will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Here.
Mayor Jernigan?
Here.
Councilmember Poe?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
And Longbrake?
Here.
And Jamie McCorkle has an excused absence. Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met in closed session on items A, B, and C. There was no reportable action taken on any of the closed session items.
Please stand for the pledge of immunity checks.
Thank you, Lord, for all our civil service. Thank you for your hard work and sacrifice. May you continue to bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise, caring hearts to scope up government before the last day.
For introductions tonight, we have in our audience, we have Jeff Williams right over here. Thank you for coming. Tim Terrell, prior councilperson, and Zach Longbrake, her prior councilperson, and also tonight is his 50th birthday party. So happy birthday. City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted. The mayor presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the council choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. And members of the public attending council meeting shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And just as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code, Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code, Section 5495.0 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and Mr. Martinez. My name is Lori Fregoso, and I'm at 914 Old Court here in Needles. I am a Needles Rodeo Association board member along with Judy Thornton, Kim Willis, Mike Shaw, and Cory Payne. I came here tonight to address some false statements being directed at our association by Councilmember Longbrake and mayoral candidate Wayne Fulver. The Needles Rodeo is nearly 50 years old. Our association has been presenting the rodeo for 20 years. Prior to becoming a nonprofit organization in 2014, we worked with the Chamber of Commerce to host this event. As indicated on the handout, that handouts, I don't know if they got to you yet, but as indicated on the handout given to you, our standing with the IRS has not been terminated, and we are in good standing. This is public information, and you can further verify this with the IRS. The accusation that our 501(c)(3) has been revoked is false. The second accusation being made is that the rodeo grounds is out of compliance with the ADA, American Disabilities Act. The Needles Rodeo Grounds is City of Needles property, and therefore, any concerns regarding the ADA requirement should be addressed with city leaders, by which you all would fall into the category, including Mr. Longbrake. Like any other entity. For use of the rodeo grounds. A week prior to the rodeo, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Payne, and a host of volunteers ascend on the rodeo grounds and begin the process of preparing to throw another exceptional rodeo for all to enjoy. It is these committee members and volunteers, many of whom take a week of their own vacation time from work, who do the needed repairs, cleaning, and preparation that goes into getting the rodeo grounds ready for the contestants, vendors, and guests. Not one of us, nor our volunteers, gain any monetary value from this work. We simply do it for the love of the rodeo and our community. You see, we are all, except for Judy, Needles High alumni, but we are all lifelong residents of Needles and the Valley, and have grown up in Needles, and we take great pride in being able to provide the rodeo every year to anyone who wants to come and enjoy. We continue to keep our admission prices, vendor fees, food and drink prices as low as possible to enable all to come and enjoy. In closing, I would like to direct you to the list of donations we have made to date to various groups, graduating seniors, sports, and local events. To date, we have given back to our tri-state $10,306.32. With five months to go until our next scheduled rodeo, just know that number will increase. It would truly be a shame to lose our rodeo and the ways we give back to the community in the 51 weeks we are not working to provide you the best rodeo. Thank you for your time. Cory?
Cory Payne, 576 South, 54 miles. For 19 years, I've been the co-chairman of another rodeo. We are not a public organization. We have been trying, people have tried to draw us into politics for 19 years. Okay? I don't do it for my own. I do it because I love my hometown. That's the only reason. Okay? We are not going to be drugged into politics. Sir, for you to sit there and batten up us along with your cohort behind me, okay? Madam Mayor, volunteer for several years to sell tickets. Sell tickets. Okay? That's it. That's all she does, sell tickets. For you guys to bash her, okay? And to bash us in the process is absolutely wrong. And I'm calling on the entire council tonight with an absolute stoppage. Okay? We have done nothing. We want no part of politics. All we want to do is put on a record. You'll hear me say that. People probably heard me say it for a couple of years. All I want to do is put on a record. Give back to the kids. Because I was one of those little kids growing up in this town that profited from all of the organizations that we give to. And untold thousands, tens of thousands, maybe even closer to hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have given back in campaigns. And to have people run around this town knocking on doors, batten up in us, it'd be an absolute shame for the final list to quit. Because when we quit, we're going to hit off hundreds of volunteers. Good luck. Good luck trying to find another one. I guess. Don't bring us anywhere. I'm calling on you guys to stop. Thank you.
Wayne Fulver, 2237 Casa Bonita Street here in Needles. And just to, for the record, according to the State of California Department of Justice, the registration status for the rodeo association is delinquent. It is delinquent since 5/15/21. Therefore, everything I have ever said to anybody has been a true statement. Now, I have been looking at this, and I'm looking at it right now. So according to the State of California, it is delinquent, and that is all I have ever said. And all I've ever asked is that they bring it up, curb. For anyone to think that I had said that I wanted the rodeo to be turned away, shut down, or anything like that, I take personal offense to as well. Because this is what I looked up. This is what I found, and I'm double checking you right now. So according to this record, as of 6:20 tonight, it is still delinquent. Thank you.
On our 22D Street. I've got legal notices in my mail about accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Can somebody explain that to me, just exactly what that's going to entail, these amendments? Want to see?
Madam Mayor, it's going to be on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay.
It'll be on the agenda, ma'am.
Can you?
There'll be a full public hearing. What you have in front of you is a public hearing notice for what's going to take place tonight.
Okay.
So you're in the right spot.
But they're not going to, you know, they're not going to find an access property, are they?
I can't talk about it because it's on the agenda, but if you hang out with another 10 minutes or so, you'll have an opportunity to discuss it.
Any other public comment? If not, public comment is closed. Interviews, interviews, and appointments to fill vacancies on various boards and commissions. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we've got some interviews for the appointments to fill some vacant positions. In front of you, you've got three applications. You've got the three candidates. Two of the candidates, I believe, are here. And so in front of you, there's two Parks and Rec openings. There's one utility board opening. There's one planning commission opening, and there's one housing commission opening. We don't have applications for the planning commission or the housing commission, but we do have three applications for the Parks and Rec Commission and one for the utility board. But I'd like to, for the utility board application is for Michael Powell, who wants to be on the utility board, ensuring that the citizens of Needles have access to affordable utilities. His background, he has an A at J.B. College, 30 years employment with the railroad. He's got leadership positions, also an engineer with peer-to-peer training, peer responder, drug and alcohol responder, and safety steward and mentor. And so he has shown interest for the utility board. He can't attend tonight because he is a football coach up at our rec program. So he is coaching. Yes. And so we also have two applications for the Parks and Rec Mission. There are two open positions. Maria McAndrews, she is applying for the recreation board. She's interested in youth development in our community. She's volunteered for many youth programs. And then finally, we have Manuel Calderon Jr. He is interested in the recreational program. His background has special interests in youth recreational programs. He's coached for, a certified coach for 20 years plus at the high school for various sports. Always had, always had interest in the Parks and Rec facilities and utilized them for sports. And with that, let's call up one of these at a time. And so ladies first, Maria McAndrews.
I have, I have, I'm applying for the position because I have strong understanding of youth programs in our area, and I have 20 years of experience in volunteering for class parties and youth sports, which currently also could be football. Should be there right now, but I'm, and I'm currently, and I'm just committed to our community youth program, and I'm just eager to contribute my experience to our cities. Thank you.
Anything to question?
Yes. Nice big, I just want to thank you for coming up. Because this is a lot of responsibility for no pay. So I mean, thank you. This is, this is what our community is about, and I really appreciate it, like neighbor, neighbor. It's a lot of volunteer time, and you don't have to do it. So thank you very much for coming up. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel Calderon.
Hello, my name is Manuel Calderon Jr. I live on 20333 Port Estre, Needles, California. Been a resident of Needles for 62 years. Just want to let you know that I've always had a deep interest in our youth programs here in Needles. I coached throughout the rec programs, part of my high school coaching career for probably 20 years, whether my kids were involved in the sports or not. I remember our rec program from the very beginning. When I was in California, my grandfather called Belt was the rec director, and we're the recreation department, actually, set where the Belt Park is at one time. I just have a deep interest in making sure everything with our youth athletic programs and our parks is, we kept up. And like I said, it's here for the best interest of our children.
Yeah, thank you. I'll speak also again. Thank you, Madam, for stepping up, having kids, grandkids. Everybody volunteer, their time to help. Again, thank you for. All right. John Moore.
Madam Mayor, if you're so inclined, you've got three positions for three people for three open positions. If the council so pleases, you can do this all in one motion. So there would be one, Mr. Powell, Michael Powell, would be the one, would be appointed for the Parks and Public, or excuse me, Board of Public Utilities with the term expiring December 31, 2027. And then you've got two Parks and Rec for Maria McAndrews and Mr. Manuel Calderon Jr. to, for a term that expires December 31, 2027. So you have a first and a second for that motion. Michael Powell, the Children's Board. Maria McAndrews and Manuel Calderon for the Parks and Rec.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longbrake?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I put, Mr. Michael Powell's actually in room.
Oh, Michael Powell, what did I?
Oh, no, he's not.
This is terrible. Stop again.
Yes, stop.
That was Lindsey DePauw. Yeah. Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against amending the appendix to the Conflict of Interest Code pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 1974. City Manager.
Yes, this is a legislation requirement. Political Reform Act requires us to have the agency review for the Conflict of Interest Code biannually. And so in front of you, we are recommending approval of Resolution 24, 2024-42, rescinding Resolution 2022-71, approving and adopting, amending the appendix of the Conflict of Interest Code pursuant to Political Reform Act 1974. So again, this is a state requirement that we're moving through, and it identifies all the officials that are required to identify a conflict through the various requirements, whether you own land, or you've got investments, the different categories. And so again, this is just a biannual requirement. So our recommendation is approval.
Any comment by the council? This is open to public comment. Anybody have a comment about this regarding this? If not, public comment is closed. Resolution number 2024-42, rescinding Resolution number 2022-71, and approving and adopting an amended appendix to the Conflict of Interest Code pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 74. A motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longbrake?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against ordinance number 668-ac of the City Council approving Needles Municipal Code, amendment to amend the section 96.00, Table of Permissible Uses, and section 96.08, the Dwelling Units. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, we have an ordinance that would update our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So basically, the state of California has a shortage of housing, and what they've tried to do is utilize accessory dwelling units to help us fill that gap. An accessory dwelling unit is, in addition to your primary unit, you've got another, a second unit onsite. And even in some cases, you've got a third unit which connects, which is like mother-in-law quarters, which is called a junior ADU. And so in front of you, we have an ordinance that, we've been through this dance before, and I apologize that it's in front of you again. But in September of 2022, the City Council took an ordinance, had it adopted, we sent it to HCD, ATB, excuse me, for the acronym, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, reviewed it, left it in on their shelf for about a year and a half, contacted the city, said we didn't have enough staff to review it, and then let us know that we had to update it because since 2022, the state has changed their code. And so with that, we have in front of you a updated ordinance. We have Placeworks on the line calling, and that really helped us get through this. And David Christie, you are, those are familiar names. They did help us with our land use settlement through Placeworks. So we're thankful for their support and the leadership of Kathy Roush and Irene Romero for getting this pushed through. But at the end of the day, we're updating it to meet the city, to ensure that the city meets the state code. So we're removing junior ADUs permitted in commercial zones. We're creating size requirements that meet the state law. We are removing provisions which prohibit, which are prohibited by the state. So accessory dwelling units are allowed to be vacation rentals. And so we adopted our code because that's what the state had requested us to do. And so we revised parking requirements and kitchen standards. And at the end of the day, we are just bringing our current accessory dwelling unit up the code. They've already reviewed it ahead of time, and so we don't believe this will be kicked back. But again, you never know with the state of California. And so our recommendation tonight is to adopt the ordinance number 668-ac of the City Council approving Needles Municipal Code amendments, the section 96, Table of Permissible Uses, and 96.8 Dwelling Units to be able to move this ordinance forward. And so you've got a copy of the red line in your packet, and it did go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval to the City Council. I do have staff here, and I do have Placeworks on the line. If you have any questions.
Council, do we have any questions? If not, it's open to public comment. Anybody in the public have a comment? Yeah.
Notice is because I'm lost. You know, I don't have accessory dwelling. I have my old garage at the back and the new one that I built. I also have a travel trailer that I keep parting from my father. Is that going to be, is there any problems with that?
So you received the notice, is it notices a violation from code enforcement, or it's a public notice? Oh, so it's just a legal notice? So that's just to inform you that this hearing is taking place tonight, and that we're going to be discussing this? So you?
Now, they are not going to, you know, run lines or put up codes and, you know, talk about access or other properties to stop violence. I've got my piece, and I also have a place next door that is actually approached onto my father. That's been there for years, and it looks like they decided to pass my legal description. But I just want to make sure that they're not going to try and put in, I was on a pole that's in the back of all these children's buyers. They keep thinking at the front of my yard, thinking they want to put a pole there. And I said, they'll be a loss if they do it too. Because I've already got a stop sign, and you were practically in my driveway. So I just want to make sure that that isn't the business of time to deal with access and put up one utility aid.
No, ma'am, that is not what this is. This is if you, the property owner, would like to add an accessory dwelling unit to your property, you have a right to do that. This is giving you, the property owner, a right to make that addition to your house.
Yeah. Number 668-ac of the City Council. City Needles approving Needles Municipal Code amendments, amend section 96, table of permissible uses, and section 96.8.
Did we close the public comment?
No, I think the chairs, before they start this. Okay. Public comment will be closed.
There were no other comments?
Second?
I'll second.
Call for the motion.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Longbrake?
Yes.
Thank you.
Recess the City Council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the council NPU items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. NPUA and council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the NPUA City Council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to NPUA council action, a member of the public may address the NPUA City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items four through five on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. City Manager.
Yes. Will you guys?
No, do you want any of the polls?
Did anybody want a poll?
If not, okay. Second?
That's what I meant.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longbrake?
Yes.
End of the NPUA consent calendar. Adjourn the joint council NPUA meeting and reconvene the council meeting. Roll call was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items six through nine on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Ellen Stappoli? Of the City?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, you've got, accepting the proposal for Phillips excavation for the well 11 through well 15 intertie project. So as you recall, the city had an emergency resolution passed So as you recall, city had an emergency resolution passed as a result of us only having two of the three wells, well, two of the three wells were contaminated. So we entered into this emergency declaration resolution, which is currently in place. As a result of that, we've been successful in receiving grants from the state of California Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So what we're doing here is this project is we're constructing a sixteen-inch transmission line made to deliver the raw water from well fifteen to the latest treatment facility at well eleven. So that will allow us to utilize all the wells that are currently contaminated. And the way we'll go from two, or one well damaged up to three wells. So this, this total cost for this project is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. It's fully grant funded, as I had mentioned, from the California Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And so our recommendation is accepting this proposal for well eleven to well fifteen intertime project in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars and fifty cents to authorize city, the public works agreement with Phillips Excavating and move forward with the notice, the warning notice.
Can I say the wells are not, not contaminated, just have pilot and manganese that is not, it's just the California law.
So I misspoke. Well, in, in the state of California believes that manganese is a contamination. It does not, it's not carcinogenic. You can go to GNC and buy it as a mineral. Now, those are state California rules. And unfortunately, we have to play by those rules. But the long story short of this is that this isn't gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a two-month project. We're gonna be able to get this online rather quickly. And then with the treatment plan, city of Needles will have pure drinking water with the sustainable water source. In the event that one of the well goes down, we've got three total wells. And that's, that's a proud moment for this community. At the end of the day, when you've got one well and you're trying to survive with fifty-two hundred people, it's a challenge. So thank you to the city staff for moving this forward. I'm really excited to get this project off the ground and lead forward.
Recommended action, approve six, seven, and nine. Call for the motion. Second? Call for the vote. Call for the motion, accept proposal from Phillips Excavating for well eleven to well fifteen intertime project in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Call for the motion. Call for the vote. End of the council consent calendar. Regular council items. Create an ad hoc committee of no more than three council members to organize the annual employee appreciation event Christmas party. City manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Per council request, at the last council meeting, it was recommended that we create an ad hoc committee of no more than three council members to organize the annual employee appreciation event Christmas dinner. So we need three of you brave souls, please, sign up to, to help support. I would like to do that with Ellen. Need a motion?
I'll move to Ellen Chong and Gittering.
Call for the vote.
Call for it. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Place Mayor Mira?
Yes.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Longbrake?
Yes.
Thank you.
City manager report, managers report for the weeks of October fourth and October eleventh.
Yeah, so pretty exciting news. The circus was in town. Those of you, someone mentioned to me, why doesn't Bullhead have this? How does Needles have this? Well, I mean, it's not a competition, folks. But at the end of the day, they were very happy. We attended last night on the last night, and they will be coming back. There was a good response from the community. And so I'm really happy to hear that, that we utilized that resource. Additionally, I'd like to celebrate that just recently the city is in the process of completing two significant road, road paving projects, one being the one point four overall D Street project up by the school district. And then the other one is the one point eight billion phase one A street improvement project, which is taking place down here by De Soto and Desdok and Akoma. So again, or excuse me, Akoma and Desdok. And so we're really proud to be able to complete those projects. So if your project, if your street wasn't done this time, guess what? That means we're moving forward and you're on the next road, right? So we're moving forward. So that was three point two million dollars worth of street projects that have been completed or in the process of being completed within the last month and a half. And so we're excited about that. This last week, council members, and they can talk about it, but basically, we attended the League of Cities, which has mayors and city managers and law firms all over California attending. And so it's nice to be able to tell the story about Needles, especially when city managers are coming up to me saying, you guys really got it going on. And, 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 you know, they've got Kim Kardashian in their backyard, and they're worried about Needles. And so that's really cool. And so I'm really proud to be part of this community and be the city manager for this town. So I'm gonna make it short this week. So thank you all. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I just want to say how nice it was to get out of my car at the beginning of twelve oh eight this morning and step onto my street barefoot, barefoot. It's so nice. I mean, it was like you want to torture someone to death, just put them on deathmatch. So anyway, it, it was very nice. I, I thought it was brilliant. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Mira?
Yes, this is one of my last meetings about the city council. I have a couple more, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Has been so kind and lovely and helpful over the last four years. I'm not running again right now because I've had a lot of personal things going on. I've lost a lot of the other members in the last few. But I just want to thank everybody. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, John, for everything you've done. I know I still have a couple more left, but I just wanted to make that little statement. And also get out there and vote. You know, the election is before our next meeting, so make sure, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
I just want to tell Pearson how much I appreciate it for making me two years. The water makes, lower work, sorry. And again, I reiterate that, oh, you go early, that's the polls presume they're open to church. Saint Anne's Church on the fifth of November. So I know.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
So on the second, so if you're interested, say, get a booth or come out and enjoy the. Second, I would like to see if you can bring back something if we can get, anything on pickleball. Those are just blowing up everywhere. Like great activity of people out moving and, but yet not so much that you can get our senior about acting also.
Councilmember Longbrake?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that sounds good, beginning with something like that. And I was one of the ones who went to the League of California Cities this, this week and last week, I'm sorry. And it was, it was, it was pretty cool. It was, it was pretty neat. I mean, I hear, I've heard people say that it's a waste of money sending people to, to these events and stuff. And I got a lot out of it. I learned a lot, I mean, about the housing. That were, that were housing element certified here in Needles. And there's, there's conferences within conferences there. And it's pretty neat to go to and learn more on, on, about different things. So the other one, I went to a conference, the other conference was FETMALL Awareness. And the city of Adelanto has a FETMALL Awareness program there. And that is an awesome program they have there. It's, it's put together by the city. And the city actually hands out the Narcan at their, at their city. If you go in the city and you can get Narcan, which my organization does too, but that's different. It was pretty neat on that. And I actually got to share in that, in that, in that little group too. And there, there was so much there, so much there to take in, so much there. And I took a whole lot of notes, took a whole lot of pictures along with my notes. And it'll be a lot more to learn about it from everything I've learned. And it isn't a waste of time and light to go to these. If you really, you really enjoy what you're doing, if you really care about what's going on in your city. Thanks, sorry.
I have the privilege of attending the Saint Vincent de Paul fundraiser dinner a week ago. And it was really a very nice dinner. They really did a nice job putting it on. They showed a video of their basement that they received the funds for, especially like from Supervisor Rao, the Legacy Foundation. And they do so much for our community, for outreach. They're also helping with Amy Avila. We're trying to start a food program for, at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school for kids on Friday afternoon to have a bag of groceries to take home. So they have food through the weekend. And so far, we've had, we have thirty-six kids that have signed up for this. So there is a need, and I'm glad that Saint Vincent de Paul is, is helping with this. Today, we, Patrick Ellen and I, we attended the Fort Mojave ribbon cutting for their internet service at the USDA. It's a loan grant that they received, and it was really nice hearing they will do all of Needles. They've got the Mojave Valley just about done. So it's nice to see a partnership with Fort Mojave come into Needles. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.